First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. The weather's a little cold out there, but I appreciate you coming out and hoping that it'll be worth your while if you came out to ask questions, to discuss what an issue was discussed. I just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, the reason for this, for the town hall meetings are so you can voice your opinion, give your, I won't say consent, but give your ideas and express what it is that you feel, anything to do with the village, from whatever. Like I said before, we're not going to be personalized, but if you have trustees and mayors and things like that, we're looking at officials, so therefore, we have to, that comes with the job. But as far as anybody else that's not a public official, we try to refrain from that. But the, and I'm hoping that we don't get into name calls. You're upset about something, everyone here is an adult, everyone here is cheerful enough to express themselves without that. Couple of things that are, that are happening in the village. First of all, I was supposed to have a CEDR program through, intergovernmental, and they did have a technical problem bringing it out to us. Their computers were not working offsite, so you had to go to the office that you then call Heights on East End. But now I just got a call, they're going to reschedule, and I'll let that, I'll bring that out, put that out, what is going to happen for the CEDR program. So I got a call today, and they're working on the date. I told them to closer to holidays, because I can't do that good. So either it's going to be within the next week or after the holidays. But I'll let everybody know about that. As everyone knows, the meetings aren't formal. I do have another mic that I will pass around to ask questions, to bring up ideas, thoughts, constructive, and I'll say that again, constructive criticism. And basically, what it is that you would like, or the question that you have. If I can't answer them, I will definitely get back with you. I'll just get your phone number, and I'll answer those questions at a later time. But we're here today to express our opinions. I know there's a lot of things, I'm not going to ask anyone to respond on certain things you talk about, what it is that you feel. You let us know what it is. You've got your, all the residents out here have something to, I'm sure they're offering, that's why they come out. I'm hoping that, you know, we do have enough people, which we do have enough, that we can have a great meeting today. First of all, in the back room, you have Barbara Campbell Pruitt, if you raise her hand, she's taking voter registration. So if anyone is not registered to vote, you can do that right here, right now. So if you're not registered to vote, please take the time out right now, go back and register. So, does anyone want to, who wants to start off? No? Okay. And, and then when you get through with the mic, you hold on to it and then someone else. But I do want you to stand up. Uh, hello?
Hello? Um, I guess, introduction, my name is, my name is Kevin Cozy. And continuing with the trend and trying to make, you know, a better place for all of us. I have more jobs. I provided, I've provided eight jobs to eight separate, different individuals, paid jobs during the election. And I have two more jo, I have two more jobs that are just come open. They'll be able to, that should be able to get paid and do real quick, real quick money for elections. You'll be working and helping to work the campaign of older woman, Wanda Rogers. And that, and if you're interested in that, please let me know, there's limited spots. But after that, after this job, which is very quick, after this job, which is very quick, there's going to be more jobs coming that, after that, because there's going to be also a campaign afterward. Also, I'm going to be also running the campaign for, helping run the campaign for Lady Covington, the University Park. And they're going to, and she's running for reelection, or she's, she's running for mayor. So we're going to, you know, not showing a bias, but at the same time, making sure that your voice, making sure the voices are heard. And there's, these are all going to be paid positions. Another thing, there is the books, the books, the 1,500 books that are going to be donated to the school system. 168 are being picked up tomorrow. And we're going to be presenting and making sure that the kids get the books later and, later on. We'll make sure that you're updated with everything that happens, once everything becomes solid. So I encourage that if your child is a part of School District 168, please make sure that they're in school. Make sure that they're aware and pay attention to the slips that may, may or may not come home as far as being made known, aware of when the books are going to be passed out. God bless you and be safe.
Hold on to the mic there, Kevin, because you're going to be passing around. I just want to make a quick, couple of quick notes. In the audience today, you have the mayor, and we also have the school superintendent, and one, just one school board member. So they're, here are one of those who they are, but they're here and they will be taking notes also. So your thoughts and your ideas will go on deaf ears, I can assure you. Okay, also, I just wanted to say right, real quick, Kevin, I appreciate what you're doing for the community. This is a young man that came back to the community. He was gone for, I think, four or five years, and he came back. I met him five years ago. He helped me out when I was out there. And now he's gone, he became, he's, he's, has arisen, he has come to his own, he's matured. And I understand he's about to get his sheep skin. So that's something that I'm proud of, and I know he's proud of it. And as you can see, he's trying to help the community. And that's, that's something that, that's, that's very important out in that community for that. Okay, who is next? Somebody, okay, want to give it to Larry?
Larry's due it, Salt Village. I have a question for you trustee Burgess, because that seems to be, to my misunderstanding, the village isn't doing well, and yet I have a school district that's doing wonders. Congratulations. And I, I'm trying to parallel these things on why our village is so failed, beside the fact that I know we're divided on numerous issues. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. But I need it to where maybe somebody needs to tell one entity how to do it, because somewhere, our village isn't moving. I hear last night, we're moving in a direction. I don't see it. I hear, you know, we're positively going in a direction. And as you sit on this, as I, can I call it a failed system? Can I, you sit there. I'm trying to get it to where, not singling you out, because as it stands, if that board's not working together, it's not going to work. And yet, last night, I was so disappointed on, you made a suggestion, and it seemed like it fell on deaf seats. And yet, I got sarcastic and talked about people sitting on a stump, because that's what I seen. You know, I didn't, my guy's got a new basketball team, you know. That, that they said I really moved the village. You know, it's a lot of red. Can you elaborate at length on, in your opinion, what's going on?
Thank you, Larry. Let me start off first of all with your first observation as well, school district. Why they have some, their surplus and things like that. I can only, I know that they've had a surplus for years. Obviously, they, whatever they did is working. You know, you've had administrators that I guess were, I won't say that we're not, but they were, they get, they get a lot of your money, they get 33% of your tax dollars. And, but they, I was kind of shocked to hear that they have those debt service. That's pretty good. Not to owe, not to have a major report. Excuse me, that's, that's, that's pretty good. But the village is a little different entity. It's not an excuse why we don't have the money. We just have not had the money for years. We've been operating in a deficit for years. And it's going to continue that way unless somewhere or some, somewhere along the line, either you raise taxes, or you get rid of jobs or services. I don't think you've been ready to cut services, and I know you're not ready to raise taxes. So we have to try to slowly dig ourselves out of this. It's going to take a while. No administration is going to be able to, don't care what anyone says, it's not going to be done overnight. But it has to be done, it has to be, you have to go in that direction. I'm not going to sit here and try to speculate. I have given my ideas. You were right last night, all I did was give an idea that seemed like I slapped somebody. All I was trying to do was just give. And I've been told about that, you know, you, you have all these ideas. What solutions do you have, what's your recommendations? Well, I tried to give them, and it seemed like I tried to start a new religion. So only thing, only thing I can do, and I will continue to keep on doing, if I see an irregularity, if I see something that I have to bring up as a question, I'm going to bring it up. Because I think that's what the people elected and elected official for, to speak for them. Because, and I'll tell you, this and this is the truth. It's not, I don't sugarcoat anything, and I'm not going to sit here and try to, just because the mayor's sitting here, whatever, it's the God's truth. If you're the mayor of the town, and you have the votes of the trustees, that will be done. I mean, there's, there is, no, I mean, that's simple mathematics. I can be there all day long, arguing back and forth. You have the votes, it comes down to voting. That's why it's important for you when you cast that ballot, at election time, to think about who you're putting in there. If you have a person that's in there that you feel that's conducive to your way of thinking, then that's what you do. That's why you do your homework for your candidates. But once it's in place, it's hard to go back and say, hey, he's doing this, he's doing that, let's get him out. It's not going to happen. And no court in the world is going to do that because the voters spoke. And when the voters speak, that's the way it is. So you have to live with it. You can ask, by all means, ask questions, by all means, ask, you know, why. That's very important, why? Who, what, when, why, where? Ask those questions, because you care, that's your dollar. That's your money. However, you pay small or big, it's just your money. So if you have a problem with you asking questions, now you have a problem. Why are you questioning, why I'm questioning? All I do is ask the question. So as far as trying to, back and forth, I'm tired and I'm through with the arguing. I will bring up questions, I will ask, I will continue to ask. Even when I'm not a trustee, if you decide to not, I will still come to be and ask, ask. Because I'm still, I'm still spending my dollar. Believe me, it's a lot, and I have to pay for, for my tax dollar. And I'm on a fixed income, you know, doggone well, I'm going to try to find that with my dollar. And you should too, everyone here that's paying. For services, not just taxes, for all services. So I hope I answered your question, but I'm not, I can't sit here and, and say, well, you know, he's not doing this. It is what it is. We're not, we're not bankrupt. Yes, we have to take money, we've been taking money from funds over a while and a while. But the reason they have 18 mil, yes, because they is. You know, I'm looking at, can you, can you give us a loan? But you know, but it's not going to happen. But I will tell you this, the school district will work with you. The school district has always worked. Now you have a great superintendent who is, is people minded. She's student oriented. She's, she's, she's a top educator. So you better believe that, you know, it's always speculation. People will always talk about people, why? Because they're jealous, they want to be. But I have sat down with our superintendent, and she, her first thing of those children, you saw that, her first thing of the children. Because I mean, I think we, we've had meetings before. I've never seen a superintendent come out that many times, but she's come out. And she's involved in the area. So she doesn't live out here, but you can't tell, because she's out here all the time. So we're just fortunate. Maybe one day I'll, she, no, I don't know, you know, as far as the money's concerned, but hopefully one day we'll, we'll have that. But I can tell you, I can rest assured tell you, right now, it's not going to happen overnight. Hopefully that, you know, we can pull ourselves up. It's going to take a while, because so far we've had.
Mr. Burgess, the, the question I put to you, do you see anything where you sit on that board that would turn it around to where, no, it won't happen overnight, but to where we can see it changing down the line? To where, I, I'm sorry, I, I listened to that two dollar thing yesterday, where let's save some. And yet, I didn't get to the end to where, I didn't hear what we're going to save a dime, not nothing. I'm, I'm very disappointed in that. It's like, I better run out of here right now and fix one of them water main breaks myself. You know, and I'm getting to where it seems like we're planning to fail. And that's all I see, to where I'm going to have to start going to that school board and learning how they're doing a successful job. Because what I saw last night, I'm very disappointed. I didn't see the way we're going to save a dime. To where I would highly recommend, and I got to be careful how I say that, because I'm very coarse. We need to remove some of our public works. Potholes and, what is it, water main breaks? We better get some of the kids training water main breaks. Because that's the only way we're going to save some, ourselves. That's all I got to say.
Okay, um, just Kevin, you think you want to answer this?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, first, Larry, I, I thank you for expressing what is your rights. And that is your right to be able to say and complain because you voted. Now, that being said, let's define what politician is. A politician, an elected official, is not someone who you work for. They work for us. Okay, we pay taxes and they draw a salary, or a stipend, or how much that is. So that's, that's, that's on that front. Now, if there's such disparity, if there's such problems, if there's such a need to fix something, then let's be a family about our home, our town, our village, and take the responsibility to make a change ourselves. Because they are just elected officials. At the end of the day, they have jurisdiction, they have power, they have a certain place where they have power, and they can move, they can move, make certain moves that be as normal as we can. But as a citizen, as a citizen of whatever town that you may stay in, so as a citizen of Salt Village, how are you being solution oriented? There's a lot of pointing at Derek, trustee Derek, and Debbie Williams, at Mayor Hanks. There's a lot of finger pointing at our elected officials, and there should be, because they're placed in power. But at the same time, let's point the finger at the citizens and see, what can we do? Where are we creating? What are, what responsibility are we taking up as citizens? Because we are the majority. What are we doing to make a change and make it stop and, and make something different from what we are? I'm not saying that we shouldn't hold them accountable for the decisions or mistakes. I'm stating that there's a lot of finger pointing going on. And we, as a citizen, we, as the populace, have a responsibility to change something, and we have the power. That's all I'm saying, because there's, I mean, because infighting is going to happen. I see it in small town politics when I run campaigns, and I see it on big time things when I do work for congressmen and things like that. Infighting happens, but it comes down to the citizen who elects the official, who has the original power to make that change, to vote differently, to get people out to vote, to, to create jobs, to create or bring businesses in, to make a choice and change things. We put too much power in their hands for us to sit back and say, look what you're doing. Be solution oriented.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. I just want to go over, and I just want to kind of, not correct, but put you in a different direction. Your trustees are the people that vote. Legislative, feds, laws, and ordinance, and money out. That's what your trustees' jobs are. Your mayor is your chief executive officer of the village. Now, if you have a problem with one of the servants or whatever, you have a problem with officers and things like that, that's who your chief starts at the top. That's where the leadership comes from. So when you do put a person in there as your mayor, he's the one that runs, he actually runs the town. Now, we, sometimes we have a village manager, but they still are at the behest of the mayor and the board with the consent, but that's the consent of the board when you're talking about voting for, you know, as I just said, financial. But running day-to-day operations, yes, your mayor does that. That's what his job is, to run day-to-day operations, unless he designates that to someone else. Right now, we don't have anybody, so that would be the mayor's job. But you ask me, what would I do? I mean, only thing we would, anyone would do is you put a plan in place. And that's, and that's the only thing I've, I've said from, from day one. But I want to see what the plan is. I mean, if it's there, I know we'd be saying we're going to get, okay, but put it down, let's, let's see what it is. And then we could critique to ourselves, we have to do it out here. We could go back and then make an appointment and say, okay, mayor, you know, item number three, paragraph number two, let's talk about it. That's the way you should do things. Unfortunately, it doesn't happen like that. And that's when you sit about infighting, because, you know, it may be, maybe I didn't get the mil, and maybe that's why I asked all the questions, and maybe that's why other people don't, maybe they did, I don't know. But if I don't, if it doesn't work with me, I'm going to ask questions, that's just me. Who has the mic? That's him.
No, Margaret.
Did you have a question, Margaret?
I don't have a question, I, I just need to make a statement directly.
Oh, yeah?
And for the most part, I am going to harp again on the item that we harped on so very long, and that is not how bad the water is, but what is happening with the funds that we are being charged to complete our infrastructure so that we can get, that we should be watered. When I first, not when I first moved out here, but we had two races in our water bills. And through with the referendum, the first part of it was supposed to be to complete or to fix the leaks and everything that's causing us to lose a lot of water. The second part of that race, that height, the rate, height, was supposed to be to start fixing the infrastructure in these pipes. We're not doing that. But yet, every month, I'm paying $7 per 1,000 gallon, if I'm not mistaken. Seven, okay, $7.50 per, for this effort, but nothing is happening. But I do understand that anytime there's a shortage in another fund, you guys borrow the funds that we're putting in to make up that deficit. And I honestly, honestly, am opposed to it, very opposed. And what I would like to see as a resident is that you develop, not you personally, but the entire board, develop and present to the residents, a strategic plan. I would like to see a three-year plan, a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, I mean, completely long-range plan, because I know that this is not going to take place overnight. I want to see some movement for this money that is coming out of my budget every month to help you guys pay another budget.
Okay, let me, let me read the ordinance that was passed, ordinance of many, section 53.1. I'm just going to skip down, because it's got a lot of whereas, and we already know that, but we'll skip down to the meat of it, where it says, about the money. It says, whereas the village's water rates are not sufficient to cover expenses for the village's current water system, and therefore, the village finds it necessary to raise water rates to $5.50 per 1,000 gallons immediately in order to cover existing necessary costs for the maintenance and operation of the water system. That was done immediately August 14, 2012. After that, it says, whereas the village's water system requires treatment to remove the vinyl fluoride contamination, and therefore, the village finds it necessary to raise water rates to $7.50 per 1,000 gallons effective six months from the date February 14, 2013, in order to cover the necessary costs for maintenance, operation, and treatment of the village's water system. So it was, it was, it was done. That's what the other $2 that I was talking about was done. You're asking, where is the plan?
And before that, I would just like to put up real quickly, and that is, even if that additional $2 is for the infrastructure, the air stripping and all of that, know that we got a loan that was supposed to eradicate the temporary air stripping and to give us permanent air stripping. So we got that loan, I E P A, correct? Or natural resources, wherever we got it from? We got that.
Well, I mean, the loan?
The loan.
The loan, yeah, the loan was guaranteed by, we have the loan, the loan was guaranteed by I E P A.
So we have that loan, so now what's happening with the $2 that we're putting in? That was over the five mill.
I think, I think, okay. You mean, we have the grant, the paid loan, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not talking about the grant.
Oh, you're talking about the loan?
I will come back to you.
Okay, you're talking about the loan?
And if you don't respond appropriate.
Okay.
Okay?
You're talking about the loan. The loan was used to put in the infrastructures, which, I'm sorry, to put in for the water system, the treatment. We have wells one.
Two.
And two, which is right here on, on our salt trail, there's well number three. Okay, we had the permanent air strippers, we had to do a lot of different things to bring that up to date. Iron out removal, all that cost close to $4.2 million, okay? That, we're still completing, it's still, it's still ongoing, we still, it's not done yet, so therefore, we, we have to continue to pay for that. And until we finish using that money, then it'll come due. In other words, we start paying on.
So then what's going to, after we finish paying for it, after the loan is exhausted, and/or after we get the grant that was promised us by Quinn, where's the two, extra $2? What's going to happen with $2 per 1,000 gallons that every resident in Salt Village was paying? What's the plan for that money? And I'm not asking you to tell me that right this minute, and I'm definitely not trying to put you personally on the spot. I'm just saying, when you go into executive board meetings, and Mr. Mayor, you hear me as well, it's my expectation that when you go in your meeting, that you develop a systematic plan, as I mentioned before, that address what are you doing with those funds if you're not completing infrastructure and other much-needed work for our water system? Okay, thank you.
I just, I just want to say that you were at the meeting yesterday, and I don't know, maybe you must have saw it on Facebook or something.
No, I did not.
But your question that you asked, I asked. The statement that you made, I made. So, I don't know, that's why I'm saying you may have seen or whatever, but, and I asked the same question and, you know, I virtually got taken apart because I asked, "But..." But, it's not that it's not going to happen. I was told, we're wait, you know, we're gonna do something in six months. Well, all I could do is tell you, in six months, there would, I mean, it'd just take a rock of scientists to figure out what's gonna happen in six months. Administration may change in six months. Who knows? But yes, that's what happened. I asked that same question. I, you and me and a lot of people that were there want to see that plan, but... Well, but now, we cannot discuss, I just want to bring it to your attention, we can't discuss that at an executive meeting. That's not, no, we don't, we don't discuss something like that. We don't discuss money.
Just draft it, just draft it, and let us see it.
Okay. And whenever it develops, I'm sure, I'm sure it'll be out whenever it comes, but no, the same question you asked was asked yesterday. Who had, oh, Kevin, that's you, Mr. Harbinger.
There's a lot of people that don't want Lake Michigan water. Some of us do, but a lot of people don't. Now, but the problem is, to me, it's still important for infrastructure to be fixed regardless if you ever get Lake Michigan water. So, why is that, your idea was look like shot down by the other trustee? And now the mayor having a funny smile on his face, or whatever, but I'm gonna tell y'all something. People vote, I mean, I tell you, things look pretty rough for me now. I may not be in the village for the next election, but I, I know some people that I can talk and tell them why I'm not in the village. But the main thing is this. If this, if this trustee is gonna ask questions about something and it seem like other trustees get information from the mayor's plan or whatever plan to vote, and he may not get the information. And he's the only one that seem like be concerned about all the people in the village. Other people that just struggling thing off, this guy's causing a problem. Our job is to cause a problem. Our job is to cause a problem. If we don't like the way things is done, we should cause a problem. That's our job. I can appreciate, you know, some of the things that have been, have happened done. But it's still part for the village to move forward. It's a part for the people. If you can't run the line, the line is not the one that's fair to taxpayers. The people are the one that's fair to taxpayers. And if you don't love the people enough, when they ask a question that they, they, when we see things happen, it's like, you really don't care. Once you get elected, you don't care. And that's not right. When people vote for people, they vote for them to represent them and the people who care about their concerns. And listen to me, Kevin, if you the mayor and you got five trustees on your side, you today will do a much better job, four times, ten times better job than Bill Towers had. Because he didn't have one hand on his side.
Okay, uh, I just want to, I just, okay, Michael, let's go over that. Um, I just want to uh, reiterate on what you, what you said as far as um, the infrastructure. Infrastructure, I mean, that's what we had to, to do. We had to take care of the uh, pumping system, the distribution plant. It was outdated, they, and I've been in there myself, I saw, actually saw water dripping. You know, so um, and that's, if we reroute a meter, guess what? We didn't pay for that. As far as fixing infrastructure right now, I mean, we fix, we fix the infrastructure as it, as it breaks right now. We know where some of the leaks are because we did a leak test. Right now, there's not a lot, enough money collectively to go in and tackle a big job. We may have something that we can do, small job, but you gonna need millions of dollars to tackle, say, maybe one mile of um, a pipe, a piping thing, to dig that up and then to do things like that. So, it's gonna take somebody, that was one of the reasons why I asked, that we put something aside, but then it was, it was just, yesterday was just, I, I got a little frustrated and probably said some things I shouldn't have said, but I still wanted to see something put in place that we can at least have a guideline, have a map, have something to say, okay, if we back in two thousand fourteen in November said we were gonna do this, here it is two thousand fifteen, now we have the money now to start doing it. What you said, man, that's what you need to do. That's what is called planning. Who was next? Oh, okay. Don't we gonna ask you to stay at the, I know standing, they don't ask you to stay.
Bernie Houston, I was at the last meeting last night. And uh, when I asked a question to the mayor and he told me that infrastructure repairs were, that were done, that the residents couldn't see them. So, uh, my question tonight is, I'd like to know. Are these done, but the residents couldn't see them? So, my question is, I'd like to know simply of where these repairs are being done. And every year, we have all these water main breaks and we pay money every month to have these water main breaks repaired. So, we know that infrastructure has to be improved. Even if you don't get Lake Michigan water, it hasn't been improved even for this contaminated, to treat the contaminated water that's coming out of line. So, my question to you is, that we paying this two dollars for infrastructure repair? What is the plan? And I asked this last night. And it should be in the, it should be somehow a capital A plan where, you know, we're gonna do this in three, five years. And another thing that I was interested last night is that the mayor told me that we pay twelve thousand dollars a month to, for airstrippers. We pay twelve thousand a month to treat contaminated water, yet we can't afford Lake Michigan water? It seem like that's no brainer to me. Something is wrong with that figure. Why are we paying twelve thousand dollars to treat contaminated water? But we have hourly employees there that's supposed to be doing something for their money. So, what are we paying the twelve thousand dollars for? I thought we own these things now. What are we paying twelve thousand dollars for? We don't own them? What is the twelve thousand dollars for?
Okay, um, I wasn't there when I was trying to go over the uh, six month.
No, don't hire you on that.
No, I was just looking for six month comparisons and uh, expenditures from...
One more. Well, my question was they, they wanna say, well, six months down the line, we've been waiting since uh, the mayor approval of them uh, got approved in twenty twelve. What, I mean, what got, what have you guys been doing since then? I'm sorry. What have you guys been doing since then? That's been a lot of talking. Six months in there, in that park. No, what have you been doing? We pay you guys, you guys, you guys work for us. Every time you come to a board meeting, there's always arguments, they always tell you what we can't have. We tell you what we want, and you still tell us we can't have it, yet you spend our money any way you feel like it. And don't be accountable for anything. I mean, it's not only water. We talked to police, they spend, I could go on days for them, you know? So, we wanna know what's going on with the money and why we can't get answers for it. The mayor brought up a big post out last night showing everything about airstrip. I don't wanna know about airstrip. I wanna know when we can Lake Michigan water again. I'm paying for it. When we gonna get the infrastructure fixed and what again?
Okay, um.
What is the plan?
Okay, now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this, hopefully I can make it pretty clear. Um, after the meeting tonight, I'm sure the mayor will stick around, but right now, we, I'm not going to, to entertain that because it was questioned before. Sorry, I can't, because then we're talking about open meetings and violations. I'm not, I'm not gonna do that. But he will be here after it's over, whether you can ask, but I'll tell you this. As far as um, what's the plan for Lake Michigan water, I mean, there is, there is, I'm sure we're moving forward. We had, we had to do what we did. We had to secure our pumping station. We had to secure where our water distribution was being, was being um, emanated from. We had to do that. We had to put well three back online because of emergency purposes. One of the other wells went down, we have the distribution of the fire came. So, that was one of the reasons why well three was put back online, for that reason. So, we can have the capability if one of the wells went down and we had a fire or maybe two fires in the, in the village and you took the pressure down, we had something to back it up. And that was one of the reasons for that. As far as where we moving forward and you don't get the answers, only thing I can tell you is keep asking the question back to me. Come to the meeting. Be tenacious. Okay, fine. And you didn't answer my question, I need you to answer. If you wanted to talk it in the office, fine, we can do that. But only thing I can tell you as far as being an elected official, put our feet to the fire, keep asking. Soon or later, somebody's gonna ask, or they gonna tell you that they don't know or whatever. But you, you cannot take no for an answer. You just can't, just, if you're not, if you're not satisfied, that's your right as a citizen, as a taxpayer, as a voter, to ask where your money's going, as I said before. Now, for the two dollars, like I just, I just spoke about that. I would like to see a plan too. Hopefully, we will get one, and you're right, six months is not acceptable to me, because you're collecting my dollar right now. So, you know, but, right now, only thing I can do is tell you to be more tenacious after meeting. You do come up, you do ask questions. If you don't get an answer, come back in the end. Squeaky, squeaky wheel, guess what? Most of all. So, that's all I can do is tell you to keep asking. It's not being disrespectful, it's being, I want an answer. And that's all you're doing. You got, and they get upset. If anybody gets upset because they have to answer a question, then I, I have a problem with that because that's the seat. You sit in that hot seat. It's hot. Nobody said it was gonna be cool when you sit down. Nobody said it was gonna be O B W O B every day, we're gonna be fine. You gonna have some questions, you gonna have some concern, you gonna have some problems in that seat. It's how you deal with it. You gonna ask criticism. They criticize Jesus Christ. Now, come on. So, you know, what, who are we? So, yes, you gonna have that, and if you can't take that as an official, I suggest that you go somewhere and find another position to, to, to get involved in because that's what people, people have questions and that's what they want, they want an answer. They don't want excuses.
One minute, you can answer one more question. I thought we own these airstrippers now, and why are we paying, still paying twelve thousand a month for them?
Okay, I asked that question yesterday too. And um, we do own airstrippers, but we have permanent airstripper. And um, it was, it was, it was the reason why a lot of that cost was there. Those airstrippers sit inside of a box, which sit outside. That box in the winter time has to be heated. You gotta pay for that ongoing heat. That wasn't explained yesterday, but I'm looking to you now. You gotta pay for that. You gotta um, um, a line that, that, that is ran, you have to continue to keep adding capital, but you gotta continue to keep maintaining. It's not a lot to maintain airstrippers, all you have to do, it go, it's collected and then that's taken out. Because airstripping is basically you're collecting the vinyl chloride, which is a gas, into a closed system and then you, then the net's taken out after a certain period of time. Goes through what they call washers, which are filters. So, that's what it goes through, they're, they're scrubbers. That's why they call it airstripping, they scrub it out. But um, it's twelve thousand dollars. I, I, you know, I'm thinking it's all electricity. I, I, me and myself, I remiss, I should have went and, and have somebody give me a breakdown to where it, where we spending twelve thousand dollars a month for airstripping, what was mentioned yesterday. Because that is kind of excessive to just airstripping. Because all of this, like I said, you pay for the equipment. Now, the other airstrippers, the, the uh, the ones that we had, the port airstrippers, the contracts stated they would buy it back for half. In other words, whatever we paid for, they would buy it back for half once we got ours. So, the company said they would pay, buy it back. How much that's gonna be, we don't know yet.
Is that twelve thousand for one airstripper?
No, that's what, that's supposed to be for the cost of operating them all. But I'm not, the only thing I'm doing, I'm just telling you, I'm speculating, I like to bring you back facts. So, I didn't get a chance to talk to Kevin today, so I will get a chance to talk to him. So, right now, we have one and two, I mean, I'm sorry, we have three, and they get ready to do one, finish one and two. So, uh, the number three is online. Who was next? Oh, Judy? I know you, you're sitting down.
I'll step.
Okay.
Hi. Again tonight, I am Judy Gess. Nobody else. First of all, I'm gonna thank Martha. I think it's a great idea being here and trying to get um, residents to register. Um, and it's all of our duties, those of us who are registered voters, to pass the word along and try to get people to register and to vote. Our voter turnout has not been, it hasn't been good, and we need to improve it. So, thank you, Martha. Kevin, I liked a lot of what you had to say. Mary Stewart, I understand your frustration, and I used to think that way for a long time. But you can't honestly say we have not moved forward in any way at all. Past administration, you would never see this. We could never stand here and talk and say something that's bothering us. And I, I agree with Kevin. It's up to us. I don't care if they don't like what I ask. Answer my question. I, I, it's important to me. I'm a taxpayer and I deserve an answer. So, I'm going after it anyway. I can get it. And I think if we all did that, look at the, look at the turnout at the board meetings now. It's the same people there week after week after week, yet we have people who play the line crazy. Where are they? Why aren't they talking? Why aren't they asking questions? They're not doing it. I looked around town, you know what? I'm sorry, it, it, it's improved. The place looks better. People feel better. Is everything okay? No. We're not saying that. But we're not saying we're staying in either. There are some improvements being made by a lot of people. Now, the important things that matter, the water that you mentioned. Mayor Hanks tried to explain it yesterday and I, I'm not good at this. I don't understand a lot of it. And again, I agree, we need a plan. We need transparency. We need to know that, okay, we've got the permanent airstrippers, they're going to try to sell back the uh, the ones that we first got. And, but then what is the next step? That two dollars, from what I understand, if I'm correct, but it wasn't answered in a manner that made it solid that this is what's gonna happen. The two dollars is going to continue and it's going to be used for infrastructure fixing and what have you when we get to it. Everything has to be done in line, you know? We needed the, the airstrippers to come in, the temporary ones, and then the permanent ones, and then the next step, and then the next step. Well, I don't know where we're at in the steps, and I think the next step, I think the next step is the leaks, getting those taken care of. And then getting on to the infrastructure and all that kind of thing. And everybody's in a big hurry for those infrastructures, and I agree with you. But people, this and my people, when they start working on that infrastructure, the infrastructure from that street to your house is your expense. Can you do it now? You wanting to rush with it? Have you got the money right now? Because it's gonna cost, and it's coming out of your pocket, not your tax dollars. So, I agree, we need a plan. We need to be, to hear at a board meeting. Not that um, all of a sudden the two dollars came up, all of a sudden uh, the uh, temporary airstrippers are gonna be sold back. That's a plus, that's extra money. We didn't know that. Things are not as transparent as they could be. And so, I think if they get it down to getting a plan and having it out there so we know what's going on, some of these questions will fade away. Not all, but some. As far as the divided board, my dad taught me when I was very little, it's not the on us what you say, but a lot of times how you say it. And by the way, some things are said and some people are treated. It appears we have a divided board. The rude disrespect by the times behavior of some of his uh, members is, is not right. And we have talked about people asking questions. Somebody gave the name to the uh, the bobbleheads, which I really like. Because sitting there watching this, it's like, nobody's asking questions. But then you have a trustee that asks questions and then they knock them down. Then they wanna know what's the solution to the problem. Then they wanna know what's the solution to the problem. He brought up a problem. But then rightfully, what was your solution to that problem? When did it become necessary to identify a problem that you immediately have to have a solution? What happened to, this problem has been identified, and we need to sit down and talk about it? We need to see what options we have to make this go away. That doesn't happen. Therefore, it's a divided board. And until they get together, as of last night, the suggestion that you talk about is two dollars. You talk about what are the other options besides setting aside the two dollars that supposedly can't be set aside? Well, then what are some of the other options? Wait six months? I agree. Six months from now, there's a new, or they're hoping, or whatever, there's a new administration. And so they don't have to deal with certain things. It's not gonna go away, because we're not going away. I'm not going away. So I think, I think the board has some work to do amongst themselves. I have a lot of questions about a lot of things going on in town that three minutes doesn't give you enough time at the board meeting, and you're trying to rush things so much that sometimes you're confusing things. Therefore, I will ask them tonight. And Mr. Murgens, I'm not asking you to answer these questions, because I don't know if you know the answers. I wanna know, as a taxpayer, we have a deputy chief of police who's very, very, um, good at what she does, and knows what she's doing, and is deserving of the position, and she's working with a contract. Prior to her being, uh, accepting the position, Tim Hoibis was appointed as our police chief. We were all thankful, he is, again, another person that is deserving and well-trained in what he does. But he is working without a contract. My question is, why? Now, this may be his choice, I don't know, but it's a question I ask. I wanna know. Why isn't he working with a contract? Without a contract, my feeling is, and again, I may be wrong, at any given time, he can be released of duty. And I think that's unfair. I think he should have a contract. I'll leave that one alone. We have two people who could function expertly in our records room at the police department. One of them has passed away, and the other one was either laid off or fired, I don't know which. The records room is more than just being in court with tickets and taking care of them. There's a lot entailed in what Ms. Walker did. And it, it isn't going to be a thing where you could hire somebody and then train. Who's gonna train them? The person that trained them is no longer there. So we need somebody in that position. Now, there's two positions, and the money is there because they're not. So why can't we get one person back, and that would be the other person that is astute in working in the records room? That would be my solution to that problem. The third one is one that, I don't know if I should bring it up or not, but I'm going to anyway. And it, it, um, cost initiative, talking about how to save money for Saw Village. And last night, I wanted to bring it up, but again, I already have the money and time. So tribal gate issues being appealed by the village guard. That appeal has been denied. My question is, how much money has been billed to the village, Saw Village, for a personal trip? And if indeed, this is a personal trip, why are the village lawyers going to look at it? If it's a personal trip, fine, it's a personal trip, that's the end of it. But I don't wanna pay for lawyer's fees for what our lawyers charge for all this time since it's been going on, and now appeals, and, and the court date, December 11th, at nine thirty AM at the data center. I, I don't wanna pay out of my tax money for lawyers for something that's somebody's personal stuff. So I'd like to know how much money, from the start of this to right now, how they billed Saw Village for a personal trip? Um, I wanted to thank the school superintendent for being here, and Larry, um, trying to say the school is doing so great, which they are, and why isn't the village? We are so different from what they have to do. And anybody knows, and we all said it, whoever won the last election was going to have one hell of a time trying to straighten out what was done wrong in the previous administration. And I predicted it would take more than one term. So it's, the school's doing great, and I think we are, we're improving. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Judy. Let me, let me try to go over it. I just want to tell everybody, and I just want you to feel, whatever you hear tonight, believe me, you're gonna get answers. You have people that are here, they may not speak or whatever, but they hear, and things that have been done in the meetings, and stuff was, because of this, this meeting, these meetings, these town hall meetings have been brought to the attention, and that's why some of the things are gonna get done, and your questions will be answered, and I'm sure your concerns will be brought up, and if not, I'm sure they know that you're gonna bring them back, bring them up again, which you should. As far as the deputy chief's contract and the chief's contract, that's something that has, that's up to the mayor. And once they, once they were, um, voted on by the board, it's up to him to, you know, if he works without a contract, that's disconsent. I mean, there's nothing the board can do anything about that part of it. And also, the records clerk, I can assure you that that's being worked on right now. Because we have court the first Thursday of December, so that's being worked on as we speak. I did come up today, and I asked about that, and that's being worked on. And as far as the money from the lawyers, I'm the liaison with the finance, and I haven't seen anything, which haven't seen bills forged yet. So how much is being spent, I'm sure there should be if we're involved in anything, but right now, if it is, I haven't seen it, it hasn't seemed to be a bill yet. But that's something that you can come to, to, up to the city hall and request, see how much it was that was spent on that particular litigation. After mine. Oh, really, that's not where you say it, it can go both ways. It can, it can, it can, and that may be it too. Yes, sir.
Um, Kelvin Jones. I understand that there's eighteen million dollar surplus, but, for the schools. But my son has not had a book since he's been in school to come home. There has never been books going home. Um, if we put the effort into our kids that we put into water, um, we will have a better community. Um, people don't leave communities, and people don't move into communities for water. There's plenty of communities throughout the United States that has well water. They will leave if their kids are getting education that they deserve. The education is the foundation of our community. And the kids are our future, and they are the future of our community. We are hashing out all this about water, the two dollars for water. It's gonna happen, it's not gonna happen. Uh, we put a lot of effort towards it, and there's not a lot of effort being put into, to our kids. I haven't heard anyone say anything about the kids. They are the most important thing for me, and they should be the most important thing for our community. And until we start, as parents, taking on that responsibility, as our kids are first, we could make up excuses and diversions with the water, but the real deal is our kids. And our kids is what's gonna build our communities. Our kids are dying. Our kids are getting shot with a foundation that's putting in place a work ethic that the kids aren't getting, because if you don't have X amount of homework, your work ethic is being cut short, and you're not being raised the potential that you can have. Until that happens, the water just really don't matter. Uh, our future is gonna be grim if we don't take care of the kids. And when these kids come inside of your home because they don't have any foundation, that's when we're gonna have a problem, and then it's gonna be too late. So, I think it's an emergency to take care of the kids first.
Hey, um, I'd like to, first of all, commend you, young man, first, um, that you brought up at a good time, and that's what I was saying at the beginning, that's why Dr. Lee is here. She's here, believe me. She's taking down notes that you're talking about. But I would like for you to come, they just had one Monday, so I guess the next one will be next month. Come to the school board meetings. I go and I attend the school board meetings. I don't see a lot of parents, I see a lot of educators, and I see the administration staff there. But they have a time doing the meetings with questions from the audience. And if they're not getting what you think they should be, that's a great time to talk to the principals. And then some of the teachers are there, some of the administrators that are there for the schools. But I'm sure Dr. Lee just heard what you said, like I said, about the mayor and, you know, all the other officials. This is what this is for, they can take notes, they can hear that. Believe me, when you get a more personalized, uh, response, and a hands-on response at the village board meeting, now, they only meet once a month now. So you have to kinda get there and put all that into that particular point. I didn't wanna put anybody on the spot right now, but she heard everything you said. And after the meeting tonight... Oh, you want us to help? Okay, 'cause I, 'cause I didn't wanna start nothing, but, okay, Dr. Lee.
Uh, I'm Dr. Lee, I'm the superintendent of school district one sixty-eight, and and as I said over and over, it is my privilege and it's my honor to serve this community. I cannot, I just left the, um, reading under the stars at Wagner tonight. We got our young people there in sleepy beds and pajamas doing like a little camp out to read. So, the thing that I think that is absolutely vital is what you just said. We can't do anything if we don't start our children. And that's number one most important. So, just to make sure that you understand, our board meetings, the business meetings that our board conduct, there is time for people to speak, and it's like the village board meetings, but there are so many other opportunities. So I will give you just a couple, for examples, coming up, so that you know. Um, I started a community advisory council. That means wants a quarter, come in, talk about anything you want to. The next community advisory council is December fourth at seven o'clock at the district office. It is, anything is up for conversation. My promise always is, you come, you bring something to me, by the next time we meet, we will have addressed it. Um, we also started up a local educators advisory council, and Martha Pruitt was there, so she was there to hear about what we're doing, understand how we're approaching what you're talking about, kind of textbooks. We actually, we actually wanna be a one-to-one district, we want our kids coming home with iPads. If other districts can do it, we can do it. That's what we want, because textbooks are static. We want our kids to experience the world as it's, as it's evolved. You can, you have a history book, let's say you have a, 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 a social studies book that's five years old. Five years ago, the landscape was totally different. Completely different. If you have a social studies book from two thousand and seven, George Bush is still the president. So we have to make sure that our young people are getting what they need on a consistent basis. So if you come to any of our advisory councils, you can ask questions, we'll tell you about what we're doing for homework, what we're doing. We've, we've now started our one-year and five-year plans. Our school board just committed to meeting in a working session on December first to just talk about the vision of what do we want our district to look like, what do we want our buildings to look like. Ten years from now, what do we expect it to be? And so we are in the midst of doing our planning right now. And we need you. And I think that when we tend to do it, and we don't know what our parents and our community says, it's not just, so those board members represent people who are elected, and then they brought me on to do the work. I can't do the work if we don't know what the vision is for the community. So if you're saying you want STEAM academies, you want science, technology, engineering, arts, math, then we'll do it. We just have to know this is where we want to go. We'll find the money, we will get the grants, we will do performance contracts, whatever it takes. Um, I know, I keep, okay, I just got, just a couple more. Um, on December second, I actually have a parent advisory council that meets at five o'clock that evening. But the first Wednesday of the month, every month, Ms. Jones can tell you, every month, the first Wednesday of the month, at nine o'clock, we have a parent coffee with the superintendent. It's open to any parent, come tell what's going on. We just, our last one, I have about ten of our Spanish-speaking parents. We have a translator there to help make sure that their needs are addressed. My office is open, on whatever you need. Last time we were at the PTO meeting, whatever you need, we can't make it happen if I don't hear from you. So I appreciate you coming here, but come to my office, set up a time, come to the parent meetings, we need your support. And then, do you have a statement, Ms. Jones?
Uh, the individual principal.
Oh, our individual, that's, thank you, that's why I have a board member here, because this, they are actively involved in all of these meetings. Our principals are hosting parent coffees, and that was another part of our plan. You can't make the changes we need to make and transform to what we should be looking like, so we can't go from a caterpillar to a butterfly if we don't know that there's a plan in place that cocones our caterpillars and turns us into butterflies. That's what we're doing. So every month, our principals actually have a parent coffee also. And embedded in there, so that you all know, we aren't just talking about it, every single administrator is being evaluated, as am I, on are our students growing, are we providing support to the community? We have very specific, measurable action plans for every administrator in this district, because my intent is, we will leave a legacy. This isn't just about today or tomorrow, this is a legacy. So, we need your help, and we need your support, and come to my office, call me.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Didn't I tell you she was tenacious? She's about the kids. Mary, can I have somebody else?
I just wanted to get something clear. Sorry, Murgens. Um, thank you, Dr. Lee. We should remember Doc, uh, L. Travallini, our superintendent, um, Rudy Williams, our superintendent. Somebody tell me somebody before that. And I understand why I say that. That was a turnaround situation. Our school district was removed from the inside out, we removed them off. And it was, some people fell short through no fault of their own. But our school district has turned it out. We have a great school district. I, I, I followed it over here, you don't remember? We have a great school district, I, I, I followed it over here, you don't remember when we put a superintendent in jail. Understand what has turned around. We turned around, we had three additions put on our, our schools. This has turned around and all I'm talking about is, I'm waiting to see that happen here. In so, in our city hall. See, but guess what had to come in place? We had to get a superintendent that put his heart and mind and body to work. Rudy Williams, El Travallini. And I'm so proud to have Dr. Lee, as I told her, don't work without knowledge. You know, but it was, of course, yes, but that's what, they're doing fine on their own. But I think we ought to get lessons. Because.
Let, let, I appreciate that, and that's all she said. Um, does, who, someone else has something to? You got enough, before, okay, then more before, after you, is there, who's next, you heard? Okay. Go ahead.
My, my question is that we, we talking about private money and. I'm sorry, I always wanna know about money. Uh, the, there's two hundred and forty thousand dollars in the CNN account. This money was given, was given to the residents, was supposed to be for the resident for noise mitigation. It's supposed to be for the residents of Carolina State and the ones living along the railroad track. I know money, money has been borrowed but put back into the fund. I wanna know why those residents are not able to get that money. I know a couple of them came up here and asked for the application and, and of course they were turned around by the village clerk and said that she didn't know anything about it. However, the money's there, I wanna know why the residents are not allowed to use that money as a subsidy for it.
Okay, I just wanna bring a little insight on that. Um, there was supposed to be the application process by our engineer, which would be Jim Zarnik, Rappleson engineer, is supposed to fill out the, or get the application process so you can have certain criteria to use that money for noise reduction on your home that backs up within so many feet of the railroad. So right now, I think that that process is done, they can come up to village hall, request an application. If not, then it should be done pretty soon, because I did talk to Jim Zarnik and he said he's just about finished with that. So that should be, that should be something that, um, should be happening. Madam clerk, if you're just gonna answer the question, fine.
No, I, I just want, I'm a resident here today.
I didn't say that, I'm just saying if you're gonna answer the question, fine.
I don't need the mic?
Yeah, well, I don't know, the mic's over there.
Um, first of all, um, Ms. Houston, your residents were not turned away.
I'm, I'm just telling you, they told me.
First of all, your residents were not turned away. I received a message and either on my voicemail or in my box. I immediately contacted Trustee Virgus, cause he was on the CN committee. And I let Trustee Virgus know that there's residents who are looking for the money. And then I contacted our village engineer, Jim Zarnik. And I asked him to reach out to Trustee Virgus and Trustee Virgus would tell you. I put those two in contact and I said, there's people that wanna know how they can get this money. There is not an application, a process that I'm aware of right now, unless Trustee Virgus and the village engineer had put one together. But I did not just turn those residents away, I handed them to Trustee Virgus and I contacted the village engineer. And second of all, now, it's nobody's fault, Mr. Wazawati, but the process was followed. The village clerk does not handle the CM fund, the village clerk was not on the initial committee like Trustee Virgus was. Village clerk facilitated a message and gave it to the proper authority. And it was handled, once, it was handled by me, not what Trustee Virgus and the village engineer did after that, I have no control. And second of all, I just wanted to invite everybody to the resource fair that's taking place in Saw Village tomorrow. A lot of people are working hard to bring resources to Saw Village. From three to eight tomorrow. Most importantly, Saw Village Walgreens is offering free flu shots from six to eight. Now, you may have insurance, you may have gotten your flu shot, but there are a lot of people that don't have that availability to them. Walgreens has over a hundred vouchers and they want people to come in and get their flu shot. We have the ICASH program coming in from the state and they can help us see if we have any money out there that's due. We have a housing, National Housing Services is coming here tomorrow. You may qualify for up to thirty-two thousand dollars in assistance for housing. We have, there's, there's flyers on the table back there, there's a lot of people that are gonna be here tomorrow, they're gonna be here for you. And they're gonna be here for people that you know that maybe you don't need the services. But we need to come together as a community and when things like this happen, we need to come out and we need to tell everybody what's going on in Saw Village. Cause I see the same faces at all these meetings and it's great that you all take the time to come out, but pass the word. Talk to people, because before Facebook and before the internet, there was telephone. There was a go outside and talk to your neighbor for a minute. Because a lot of things are said and done, that might not be a hundred percent actual and factual. But you know, you come to meetings, you pick up the information, but pass the word on. There's a lot of fires on the back table back there, why don't you pick one up and kinda talk to your neighbors a little bit, cause that's what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanna say, um, earnings. I wasn't, okay, first of all, yes, there is the process, I talked to Jim, I didn't know. He told me the last time I talked to him that he was just about through with the application, I, at that time, I thought it was done. So, okay, I will follow up with that tomorrow and find out where he's at with doing that, because he's gonna put together an application. And I also, yes, I was on, I was on a lot of things, I was on the CN, um, noise mitigation, I was there for when they put the, um, the delineators down Condes Grove, I was out there measuring with the crew for that, did it, um, the delineators that were going, torn happening, as you see. You know, and then I also asked, um, the, um, engineer to fill in, which we had to do a twice, second set of railroad tracks. Um, that had potholes and things like that, so yes, I was involved in that. But, um, I will, from me to you, I will, I'll make sure that that is taken care of, find out where he's at on that and I'll get back with you. Javante.
And, um, just to mention, maybe remind you, maybe you can put it on your calendar or pass it along to your friends. That Saturday from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, the Rockover cheerleading and volleyball teams are sponsoring a pancake breakfast. At Rockover School from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, it is six dollars per person. And they have pancakes, sausage and juice and this is to provide, you know, healthy vitamins for the team activities and they, and they perform for them. It's, if you go to the school office tomorrow, it's five hours, but at your, it's sixteen hours.
Oh, okay. I would, I just have to say, I was there last year and, um, you do get, you know, it's pretty, you get pancakes, you get juice and, um, sausage and if you cry enough, uh, people will come and like you say. So, but you know, they got a lot there, so. So, we appreciate that, Javante, and also, um, I want everybody, you're running out, but would you please tell everybody your type? She's president of the PTO, okay? I don't know why, you know, sit there. Resident. Okay, keep being modest, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just got a question, uh, it regards to our police department. I didn't know till last night that we, that I had lost a good friend of mine. She used to be on the police, her name was Emily Walker. I used to work with her. Back when we had white head Patty. Now, question is, now that we got two, two officers gone, I wanna know where do we stand, is how many police officers on the force now?
She, she was, she was a record clerk. She was a record clerk and, and an officer got there, has been off for about six months now. So we, so we, yes, we've lost an officer and we lost a employee that was, as a record clerk, okay. So, I mean, we still have a, we still, we're still down maybe, I think we have around twenty-three active patrolling officers. Well. What's wrong? Do we, do we have enough, we never have enough? Well, we do have enough to take care of the shifts that we have, yes, sir. Now, if we gotta bring some more, then yes, that's, we're talking another cost factor. Is anybody else happy? Before I say what I have to say, is anybody else okay? I just wanted to say one thing, I wanna recognize, he came in a little late, but I really appreciate him, that's my guy. Um, I've been to his church several times. He has a youth, um, where did Kevin go? Kevin left. But anyway, Kevin put on a youth seminar at his church, um, two Saturdays ago. And, um, this, this man is really active in the village, he cares about the residents, he lives here. Um, he invests here, he has, have you ever been to his church, it's very up there, very. So I told him before, I don't need to go to Zoom if I come here in the sun. It is, but he speaks from the heart. And we're good and we're glad, we're, 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 really, we're, um, I would say fortunate to have him and I committed. And, um, I just wanted to recognize him as past his. But, um, I just wanted, he doesn't wanna say anything right now. I mean, there's only three long, many people in here, I won't say who they are. But he's great. But, um, I just, I just wanted to tell you guys that I really appreciate, um, you coming out. Don't think that what you said tonight is not just gonna go on deaf ears, no, it won't. You've had the administrators here, Dr. Lee, you got the mayor here, you got the village clerk, you have a village trustee here. Believe me, they're listening to what you said, they may not talk right now because, like I said, we don't wanna go through all that, but they'll be here after the meeting's over, if you wanna talk to them, or you can always schedule, the mayor's here right now, he has his book with him. Schedule a one-on-one, sit down, see what he has to say, don't just say, okay, I'll talk to you at the meeting, come to his office. That's what it's there for, he's a servant of the people, we all are. Come to his office, talk to him, ask him the question. If he gets back with you, when the person tells you, I'm gonna get back with you, they don't get back with you, then that's when you come to the board meeting, say, I can get back with you. But they give them a chance to say that they wanna do what they wanna do. You never know, it may happen. But we're not here, like I said, tonight to point fingers, we're here to try to find solutions, we're here to try to go back and forth with our residents, our taxpayer, our people, uh, people that use services here. Everyone here in this village is an important, has an important role. Everyone in this village is accountable. We care about everybody. Can't just take a few, you have to care about all, even though you, you, you may have people that you may feel don't like you. I can't make that statement, I don't really care if you like me or not, I'm gonna be who I am. I'm gonna stay who I am. I love people. If there's an alternative, I don't wanna see that alternative. But I just wanted to tell everybody, and this is from my heart, Emily Walker was a person that I knew for quite a while. And, um, she fought every day, I don't know if people saw her come and work. But Emily, I remember the week before she was in the final stages. You know, she, I saw that transformation coming before my eyes all the time, every day I came up and went over to there, came here to the village hall. She came out, that's what her, that's what her drive was, is to come, to go to work, because everybody was asking, why'd you take sick days, why'd you do this, why'd you do that? But that was what she wanted to do. And if she had the tenacity to come to work every day, even though she could've said forget it, not give up, if she had that tenacity to do that, then who are we to say that we don't have time to put in our life to make things happen? Because that was a person that I saw every single day fight through whatever, she didn't even talk about how, wish she was in pain or whatever, she did what she had to do. She did what she had to do to make it happen. So we cannot sit up here and, and, and make, you know, point fingers and say, you're not doing this, you're not doing that, until you walk in another person's shoe. Until you able to see their pains, you don't know what they're about. I have a lot of people that may don't like me for whatever reason, I don't know. At this particular point in time in my life, I don't care. I know I love God, I know I love Jesus and I have him in my heart, that's all that matters. Everything else is just another thing. So we can't sit here and, and continue to point fingers, let's do. Let's do what we have to do to move this village forward, everyone's talking about. You have a school superintendent here, you have representatives from other areas that have, that have, um, committees, I'm not gonna say committees, that have organizations out here in the village. You have your churches that are involved in your village, get involved with them, help them out. You have the bases here, the blueprint is here, fill it in with yourselves, get out there, volunteer, show that you're trying to make things happen, don't wait for somebody to make your village move forward, you move your own village forward, that's what it's all about. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. And please, after things are over with, you can talk to the, um, representatives here, um, like I said before, the representatives and the trustees. Thank you very much. Also, next month, this starts Christmas, we will have a meeting, we'll have one in January. Christmas time is for Christmas time, so save your questions up for that time, but we'll, we're gonna have one. But I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. Have a good evening, Merry Christmas.